And make some decisions there.
The important one to me right now, and I know the numbers are soft, is how far off is the police budget?
The police budget?
Yeah, close.
Um. I believe that it's close. I know there are some things in the works that I don't have documentation for yet, so we're looking at that. Chief Otter and Maria and our grant writer are working with CJTC and the state to try and get some funds there. So that will make a huge difference, depending on the amount we can get.
Yeah.
It seems from what I've heard so far that the parameters maybe aren't as stringent as for some other grants, so we will see. I don't have any hard information on that yet.
Yeah, like you said, I knew if it was soft, I just wanted to know if we're way out or we're close.
Yeah. You know, I think we're close. The expenditures in so far do also include a 1.5 COLA. Because I, as I understand it, City of Toninano employees did not get a COLA at all last year. Now, we can reduce that if we need to and if the council sees fit. But, you know, I think it's only fair that that's not even close to what other agencies got last year, as far as the county had higher than that.
Right.
So, we need to do what we can there.
Are we looking to put a line item in, at least for this year to start, so they can start dumping money in there? A little bit, a little bit all the time for new vehicles, instead of just completely leasing them or renting or buying?
Yeah, we're looking at that. The mayor and I have talked about it. I'm not sure how much we can do. We are looking at some other options for police vehicles. The mayor has been talking to people that work with Department of Enterprise Services, and we talked to the chief about that. We just have to get it going. Everybody's been, you know, pretty concerned with the budget. We're still in the 24 audit. In fact, the auditors are coming.
But that's why I'm bringing it up, because to me, this is an important budget item.
Right.
With interest rates not coming down, and we've got, we'll be lucky if we got, what, another year before we have to start replacing vehicles? Which means we gotta-
Well, I think we're gonna have to start, we're gonna have to replace the chief's truck before that.
Yeah.
What you want to say, so there you go. If we can have a line item where we can just start putting stuff in there in a few years, we don't have to worry about, because Tom Water used to do it, I don't know if they still do.
Yeah.
Where they never, they never borrowed money for their vehicles unless they had to get more than one or two at a time.
Right. And there does need to be a line item for that. The question is, where are we gonna take, where are we gonna take away from to put in there?
Not necessarily take away from. It's just if you know it's gonna cost you this much, start saving that right then.
Well, that's-
You're doing that anyway.
Well, we gotta take it away from somewhere in order to save it, is what she's saying.
Yeah. We don't have-
'Cause we don't.
Our beginning balances aren't gonna be what they were last year.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, and that's something we've been wanting to do. Unfortunately, this year, we haven't found the extra resources to do it. I mean, I don't know what to say. There's, you know.
The person that is helping at the police department find grants, are the grants available for such things as vehicles?
You know, I asked the chief that, and he said he didn't think there were for vehicles.
I don't think so. We've never been able to get a grant for a vehicle. But we, what we ended up doing a lot of the time, because Tom Waters is our sister city, and they have better maintenance on their vehicles than we'd be able to get a vehicle from them now and then.
And chief, when he first came to me about his vehicle, did mention that Tom Waters is keeping their vehicles longer also, and probably at this point, none of those would be worth
Yeah.
taking second hand because they already have so many miles on them that they'll be, he'll be right back where he's at now. So, unfortunately.
So we'll just look this over.
Okay.
Get back to her with any suggestions.
And I'll send you a new copy when I, if I can get any significant updates on the expenditure side, so, you know, that we can look at those.
I would just add on the revenue side of things, that a lot of it's based on our last year's revenues. And just know that we can make adjustments if we need to. Like, we get a grant for something, we can make adjustments. But right now, I think it's mostly based off of last year's, last year's revenues.
Okay. Okay. Here we go again. We're early, early, early.
I'll just, one other thing, Nancy, just to make sure, on the levy certification, we just did the 1% right? That's, we asked a 1% increase that's allowed by state law?
That's correct. That's correct, yes.
I think everybody understands that's a
Yeah.
kind of go up 1% without a vote.
Well, we might as well do it.
I was gonna say, we have this 1%, on the table without a vote. Have we looked at actually putting a levy out there for the public at some point? To vote on?
We've never talked about it, no.
Again- I'm more than willing to talk about it, but this is, so the council, and you have, all the, I'm not getting you, the council overall has a idea. I think 1% for us is like, Nancy, you can tell me, it's around $3,000 or $4,000 for every percent. So, we'd have to do like, to get $40,000 more, we'd have to do a 10% increase in our, in our property taxes, which I just do not see
No.
asking people right now. I mean, yeah, so it's, we're such a small organization, to ask for, ask for a significant increase is a, it's a big, it's a big hit on our citizens. Or we'd have to ask for a pretty significant increase.
If the preliminary- Oh. Is he still talking?
What, Dave?
Well, I said, more than willing to talk about it, though we want to.
Yeah, but we don't want 10%.
Yeah. The numbers they used for the levy worksheet indicate that that 1% is just slightly over $3,500 this year.
This, either.
Yeah, so. Okay.
And the other thing that's kind of out there right now is the fire department levy. And then, you know, they're asking for a lift increase too, which can affect how much we can collect because what they collect out of our-
Yeah, we go down.
And I don't know what that effect is totally, if it's, but it's something we're gonna have to look at if they pass it, or what that means for us.
Now, do they need the 60% for that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's 60% of last year's total vote.
Okay.
So if we have 100, 100 people vote, we need 60 to pass it.
Okay. Okay, well, we might as well do reports. Is that, anybody have anything else for the work session? Dave?
Just real quick, just real quick, I just wanted to say, within the council and the public, I know this is probably, probably the worst time I could be gone, and, but I just needed to be here for my wife and her thing, so I apologize for not being there and not being there to get some of this stuff done. But hopefully, I'll be back early next week.
Okay. Family first.
That's right.
No apology is necessary, you gotta do.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, let's do reports. Chamber is meeting November 19th at noon at Sandstone. The Christmas tree lighting and auction dinner are December 5th down at the Eagles. Steady is going to be, for November is the 21st. And it's in Yell, EDC Forecast Expo is December 4th. And I'm gonna be there, working. So, that's the report for the Chamber, the EDC, and Steady. Library, nobody's here. Finance committee, we didn't have one. Funding commission, chief of police, anything from the chief?
Not that I'm aware of, just that Brent is looking at.
Public Works, anything? No, Troy is on vacation. Okay. Park specialist, clerk treasurer.
So, I sent you guys the bank statements a couple weeks ago, and I was waiting, there was a system error. I wanted the transaction, so I couldn't get the treasurer's report for September, so you guys have that. Just wanna know if there's any questions. I'm still trying to figure out the City Street Fund. We're still waiting for some funds from TIB for the overlay, so that's why that's in the negative. We still have that Reserve Operating Fund, negative $39 that I gotta figure out. And you'll notice the asterisks on Fund 01 and the City Street Fund. The, in this, I want you to be assured, this is on the bank, not on anybody that's making deposits, none of the clerks, nothing like that. The bank deposited some of our funds that were supposed to go into our regular checking account, into the court checking account. And it wasn't caught until after the first of the month, so there's a crossover in the month of a transfer from the regular checking account to the, or, to the regular checking account from the trust account for reports. So, that will be reversed in October, so.
You would think that we know that about-
It is not the first time it's happened. And Jessica writes the account number on the envelope every time it goes to the bank. And I'm not trying to knock the bank. Everybody makes mistakes, but there, that, it was not our mistake this time.
When I lived in Aberdeen, I was Linda K. Mitchell, and there were two other Linda K. Mitchells.
Oh.
And I went to every bank, and they didn't have any money. I didn't have any either, but they had less than I did. I got checks back when I'd get my checks back for these Linda K. Mitchells, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, even if I put things in with a deposit slip, they'll-
Yeah, it happens. It happens. So, anyway, are there any questions on the treasurer's report for September?
No.
Okay. That's all I've got, unless there's any questions from the mayor or Jeff.
Any questions, Jeff?
No.
Dave, do you have a report? We lost his picture.
Yeah, I would just mention that, or you asked me if I have a-
Yes, please.
Yeah. I don't have a lot. I would reemphasize what Nancy talked about. I was, went to the state surplus the other day, just because I knew they had a program for municipalities. And they were very positive that we may be able to find a good vehicle for police. But we need to fill out some paperwork and get some stuff signed before we can even look. Anyway, I'll work on that when I get back, and, what else? I think we talked about the budget stuff. Trying to think what else I've kind of, don't have my thoughts with me totally. If there's anything else that I attended before I left, so I can't think of anything right now. But hopefully, I'll be back early next week, and we can work on the expenditure side and get that out to you as soon as we can. So, that's gonna be, I think, where we're gonna have to do some work. So, I'm hoping we can get that out to you ASAP. And I appreciate your patience with trying to get through this, with going through the audit and everything else at the same time. It's been a huge, huge thing for the staff, so I appreciate your patience on getting some of this stuff done. Hopefully, next year, we can go all the way through it, Nancy will go through it once, and it'll be much easier for us.
Well, tell Leah we're thinking of her and her family.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be that.
Be what?
I have nothing.
Solid waste advisory. I know you got some. At it, girl.
Amendment for the Thurston County Code. They're changing terminology mostly. But rate increases will be the other change. Rates are being taken out of resolutions. Most of the time for the meeting was spent on OPMA, which is the Open Public Meeting Act. And it's mandatory every four years that we all have it, so.
Really? Well, I guess I better get-
Every four years is what she said, that it was mandatory. Counseling a regular meeting just needs to be posted on the door and on the webpage. When having a special meeting subject, use an agency to share the communications. I didn't quite understand all of that, but the other update was the compactor. The work starts on October 20th, and will take two weeks to complete the work. But any person that is going to the work to drop off, they said that the time will be extended because of the work that is being taken, being done at the current time.
So, that was it?
Thank you.
How about-
Eric, on the training, I think at one time, at least, we had records of when everybody last took the training. So, I'll see if we can dig through it and find out the last time we had records of somebody taking the class.
Well, I know I need to.
What, PDC?
Make sure that it has been notified.
Open Public Meeting Act.
Yeah, the one, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have a ticket. Ha, ha, ha.
Well, you do if you didn't take it. Every four years, you gotta take it anyway.
No.
Okay. School board.
November board.
TRPC.
I already reported on TRPC and TPP, but on November 6th, and if you guys are interested, I'll get you the time and place, is when they're gonna have an open evening to meet the candidates for the director, you know, the director of TRPC and TPP.
Okay, I, nothing from the commissioners or the legislature, so that's it. Till the meeting starts, see, we've got a long time. We did talk, Dave, about, do you remember when the meetings were from 6:00 to 6:30? And, I mean, the work session was a half hour long, and then the meeting started at 6:30?
Uh-huh. That's a good idea, to maybe go back.
I do think it's a good idea.
On the kinds of things that were done very early.
You know, because we, now we've got 40 minutes, almost.
I agree.
So.
I mean, we can always do it, we have some, a lot of stuff that maybe make up-
We start the work session, yeah, 'cause all we need is a half hour for the work session.
Yeah, I mean, we're covering half of our regular meeting during the work session.
Yes, we are, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Good. Yay.
So, what do we have to do to change it?
Well, I think you've got to, it has to be announced publicly, doesn't it?
Yeah.
That we are changing. Maybe put it in the paper that the meetings will start at 6:00. I mean, that work sessions will start at 6 o'clock, with the meeting following at 6:30 from that.
Okay.
Okay.
Off of that.
No, the work session now starts at 6:30.
I know.
And you wanna move it up a half an hour?
6 o'clock for the work session, with a meeting following at 6:30. The work session is different than the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that's why I said-
But is that gonna affect new people coming in that are working?
No, I don't think so.
You think they're home by?
Well, usually, home by five anyway. 'Cause that's not why we changed it.
'Cause it was 7:00 and 7:30.
What?
It was 7:00 and then 7:30.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
You're right.
I see what Elaine is saying.
We could, we could have the work session from 6:30 to 7:00, and the meeting at 7:00.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Better, but hey, how about we just wait, can we wait till the January meeting, when we got new people in?
Sure.
For the new people.
Does that sound good, we just do a couple more?
That's a good idea.
Yeah, Elaine made a good point.
Yeah, what?
I said Elaine made a good point.
People from, yeah. You wouldn't have any problem, would you? Oh, you're not gonna be here.
No, I won't be here.
So I don't, we don't have to worry about you.
What is better for-
Is that an actual time change, or?
What is better for you?
Don't put it, don't put anything in the paper.
Yeah, no, yes.
I'll send in a, an ad.
Okay.
What's better for you?
What?
What, what times are better for you?
Well, I get off work at 4:00, so the earlier the better.
Yeah, okay. She'd like it to start at 4:30.
And I like to be a bimbo during periods, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, and this really is a council business, but I wanted to let you guys know that Jessica and I are gonna have City Hall open from 6:00 to 8:00 on Friday night for trick or treaters.
I'm gonna be in Paul's boat. Six to eight in City Hall?
Yes, we're gonna have it open. We're gonna, Jessica and I are gonna drop off a little bit.
We think some of the other staff would probably-
Well, they used to do it all the time.
Yeah, we wanted to do it again.
Do you need candy?
Oh, no, Jessica went to Costco.
Okay. Just checking.
We have, probably have enough for the next three years.
So, okay. I'm laying there waiting to have the procedure, and I can hear this one nurse talking to somebody. No, it was when I was in the room, talking to the doctor. And he gets 1,000 kids at his house every year. And he and his mother both, they dress up, do all kinds of things. And somebody said, "How much candy have you got this year?" And I think he said, "Well, my mom's already brought over about 500 bags," or something like that.
Okay, we don't have that many.
Can you imagine?
No.
We have like eight Costco bags.
I don't have.
Which is a lot.
Well, I'm a sprout.
If you guys are interested, Sunday, this Sunday, there's gonna be a Honors Veterans thing over at the Grange Inn by UPS.
Oh, oh, well, there's also one at the school.
This Sunday?
No.
No, this, this is a few days, it's a few days further.
That's called the-
That's a breakfast thing. And then the, the tribe-
The Chehalis-
Yeah, they do a dinner for us.
Tribe is doing a dinner, right, for veterans.
What is the name of the one by UPS, the Grange?
Uh, Brine, yeah, Brighton Park Grange Hall. It's like 2:00 on a Sunday.
Okay. Okay.
Is the one at the school on the 10th?
No, it's not. It's, it's not, it's, it's later in November, I think.
I don't, I didn't think so. I thought it was close to Veterans Day on the 11th.
It is, close to that?
Yeah, isn't it?
I used to have it in here. I can't find it.
I can't get 15. I was gonna say, I can check with. Did you respond? Are you going to the one at the school?
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna say, 'cause she asked for RSVP on the ones.
Okay, if you wanted to, for the Executive Director Recruitment Reception, it's Thursday, November 6th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Port of Olympia, the Olympia Room on Columbia Street downtown. What happened to it? I had it here.
I think somebody, somebody had sent it to me, I think it was Karen Black that was-
Has, I, I just want, I just wanted to let you know that they're not picking that up until Thursday, so. All right.
Did you guys see there's a planned power outage between 10 and 1 tonight, or PSC for Toninano Yell right here?
All of them?
Uh, it doesn't say, it doesn't give specific, um-
'Cause my power never goes out.
Well, mine gave out about 140, 30, uh-
'Cause I'm in line with the grocery store.
This is because of, of equipment damage.
This just, it just came.
Maybe if you get the original, you can-
Yeah, that's why my computer dinged, is 'cause it just- Oh, it says see below for outage, you take this.
My sister was out of power for two days.
Yeah.
My sister was out of power for two days, I don't know when, I may be- Two. By Sunday, only eight houses. She was 11, well, luckily David generally hears, so.
Oh, I think.
Yeah, they were all right. I told her, she's like, "Was yours out? I have mine, isn't it all right here?" Kind of like your sister's right there.
Bad end of town, goes out quite often.
Yeah, I've noticed that, but all the way back to my road, was it that weird?
Yeah. I'm, I mean, I'm totally okay.
Thank God, yeah.
I feel for others, so.
Yeah. Yeah.